Ready? Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. Happy August to everybody. Can we have approval of the agenda, please?
Second.
Who moved? Someone on this side. Please pick somebody.
Missy.
Missy moved. Second came from this side.
I'm Ramstone.
Michael. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Shannon, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you, John. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It's that way. Oh, there's the flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shannon. I think we have some announcements tonight. Mr. Mark, are you doing announcements?
I am, thank you. School is ready to begin next week, and we would like to welcome our returning and new families to the school district of Beloit. School begins Tuesday, September 2nd. Ninth graders will have school all day with upperclassmen joining them at noon. RCA and BLA students will use this day as an orientation day. All other students will have a regular, full day of school that day. This information, along with this year's bell schedules, calendar changes, school supply lists, and back-to-school nights can be found through the link provided on our homepage, Thank you to the City of Beloit Leisure Services for organizing this year's School Supply Drive by offering pool patron a discount on Fridays with the donation of a school supply item, as well as Check Advance, Golden State Foods, Bouchefaro, Family McDonald's, Kerry Ingredients, Steak &amp; State Collections. Families in need of assistance may stop by their child's school to pick up some of school supplies on their child's list. We would like to invite the whole community to join us for the Fourth Annual Good to Great Activate Fitness Festival on Sunday, September 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at Beloit Memorial High School and continuing along the Rock River. Besides having the chance to participate in physical challenges, guests can earn raffle tickets for the chance to win one of several door prizes, see the new fitness center at BMHS, as well as be treated to a free lunch of heart-healthy foods. Also coming up are two ribbon cuttings. Cunningham's grand opening will take place on Wednesday, September 24th, beginning at 5:30 p.m. Gaston's ribbon cutting event will be held on Monday, September 29th, also starting at 5:30 p.m. More information is on our website, www.bloitschools.net. This concludes the August announcements.
Thank you, Mark. Next item on our list is recognitions, and tonight, I think Missy's gonna actually lead us in recognitions. We're giving Melissa a night off, so, thank you, Missy.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be able to do this. This is my favorite part of the whole board meeting anyways. I'd like to invite Maria and Erica and their, Deb Fisher, their advisor, to come up here, please. And I'm going to read this.
Wait till they get on TV.
Right, I will. Maria Acevedo and Erica Dominguez, did I pronounce that right? Dominguez, I apologize. Two Beloit Memorial High School students decided to take their youth-to-youth work from learning to action. The two heard about an anti-smoking campaign at a conference they attended last year and decided to tailor it for this city, Beloit. The girls created two large sign designs, one for the elementary and one for the intermediate secondary, to hang outside near playgrounds, athletic fields, to remind guests not to smoke around these areas. The signs have been made and sent to the schools to hang. The elementary one notes that the playgrounds have young lungs at play, while the secondary school's sign says "Young Lungs at Work" printed on them. Very creative. I'm very proud to say that this is wonderful. They came out of your advisory group. Would you like to say anything? Come on.
We want to add that the reason we did this mainly was because of e-cigarettes, because they have become such a huge problem. So they say this is a tobacco and smoking device-free zone. E-cigarettes, we just got a report yesterday that in the last two years, they have three times as large a number of youth using them. Used to be about 86%, now it's 263,000 kids are using e-cigarettes, and they're turning to cigarettes afterwards. So I'm very proud that they thought that this was important. They seen someone use it at their school once, and they said, "We gotta do something about this," and they did. So, very proud of them.
And we are too. Thank you.
You got plaques for them?
Pardon? Yes, the plaques. I'm very proud to present Erica Dominguez, I will get it, and Maria Acevedo that recognizes you and your extra work that you've done for the students, and also commend you on your initiative for this effort.
So, thank you, ladies, for your good, great work, and I think one of the things I heard in that commentary was "learning to action," right? And, you know, if that, if we do nothing, if we do nothing else and teach you at the high school and through Beloit District how to take your learning into action, we're doing great things at that point. So, thank you so much for actually taking us up on that and making it happen, so. I think our next item is citizens or delegations, those that might be here to visit us tonight who might want to speak. If there is anybody on that wants to do that, I have a little thing I have to read. So, is there anybody who wants to speak? Steve's just getting ready, so he'll step aside. We still have, anybody want to speak tonight? If not, we will move forward. Thank you very much. I think the superintendent's report to the board, and Steve gets to do that himself tonight, so we'll see. Todd will help him out with PowerPoints and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, all thanks technology. We call him Techy Todd.
Building projects is in progress, I think, is what we're doing, right?
We do. I just wanted to get an opportunity to update the public on where we're at as we end another summer, end another building season, and enter into the next school year. So I appreciate the opportunity to kind of update everybody. It has been busy in the world of building and updating our facilities, and very proud of what's happened throughout our district. And as we enter into the fall, we will be down to one building project, which will be the Frozen Intermediate School, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. We just completed the work on the fitness center at the high school and had a grand opening there last week, a spectacular new 7,500 square feet facility. Again, thank you to Sean Fredericks and Kim Gilbank for working very hard and diligently to write a grant some years back, which was a pep grant, which yielded somewhere around $900,000 to put, and put all the equipment into that room. So, I urge the public, if they haven't had a chance, get to the high school, take a walk through it, go look at the noon editorial if you haven't seen that, but also, please get to that fitness center. Again, any groups, alumni groups that have been, had the opportunity to go through our high school, continue with the same theme, and it's just that, what amazing facility. I'm really proud of our custodial and our maintenance crews for updating and getting some of the old carpet out there and improving the flooring, and just really making it a beautiful place. Along at the high school, we are investigating the greenhouse possibly for next summer in a renovation to expand our science curriculum, but for right now, we are renovating the school clinic, and so... One of the things that I do want to talk about is, you know, I did talk about the fitness center, and you can see it there. I'm gonna see if I can go full screen. I'm not gonna even try that, I can't read it, so my eyesight doesn't work well enough to see where it says "full screen." Any rate, the bottom line is our fitness center's done there, and you can see, but we're getting ready to renovate. We are actually in the final stages of renovating an area that our counselors will be going into, and a new career center. We went in partnership with local businesses to have what is going to be called a, it will be called the Create Center at the high school, we'll get to the scoreboard in a minute, and the Create Center at the high school is going to be there specifically to help our kids and our community in looking and searching for careers. So we're looking, for the first time ever, to have a one whole part of our high school, one room dedicated to just showing kids where they can go in life and jobs as we go forward. Scoreboards is one area that I wanted to talk about also. The scoreboards is a situation where, on the surface, it looks like it costs a lot of money, but the truth is, scoreboards is a revenue generator. So, by going into advertisement agreements with a number of local, and not just local, national businesses, we were able to generate enough money not only to pay for the scoreboards, but we're hoping in three to four years, we'll start making revenue that will pay back and help fund our athletic program. So this isn't just a matter of having a great new scoreboard, a video scoreboard with capacity to show replays someday, maybe, but more importantly, to be able to showcase our schools and our kids in a way that we've never done before, but it'll also be a situation where it's going to be a revenue maker and, again, supporting our athletic program as we go forward. I talked a little bit about the new Create Center, for the Career Center, but we also are gonna have a wellness clinic in the high school. The wellness clinic will be a combination of our school nursing and then a partnership between us and Beloit Health to offer our kids medical care that we've never been able, acute care, that we've never been able to offer before, except that we did have a wellness clinic a couple of years ago in a partnership, but unfortunately, that was a situation where that particular partner wasn't able to sustain the relationship. We feel really good about our ability to do that with Beloit Health as we move forward. I talked a little bit about the new career readiness area, and the REACH is the new logo that goes there, and you can see the, kind of the prism that goes in the middle, that's the A in the word REACH, and it is all about taking the school colors that you see in any of our banners or any of our logos that you see from the school district of Beloit, it takes those colors and incorporates them. I always come from the Jeff Larson as an advertising group, and it is something that we're really proud of, and we're gonna have a kickoff with our community partners sometime in October. We're hoping to be able to bring everybody in, tell them thank you for the partnerships that we have, and then look forward to the future, the things that we're gonna be able to do. We're excited about Gaston being done. We're gonna be, they are doing the final things this week at that school. The school is beautiful, and it ended up to be probably the longest project that we had of all of the projects because we didn't anticipate the additional $2 million that we put into the project, but we did, and we have filled up the school. So, we have, as you probably know, increased our enrollment, about 400 students in the last four years. All indications are from our centralized enrollment that we're gonna be up another, you know, 50 to 100 kids again this year. You never want to say too much because kids come, kids go at this time of year, but our enrollment on the paper looks like we're showing that kind of growth again. That's a great thing for the school district of Beloit, it's a great thing for the sustainability of this district and then our budget going forward. Gaston is a beautiful school that will actually have a community garden outside of it. It has classrooms and transitions in that building that are spectacular. We moved the front of the building, the entrance of the building, off of McKinley to the back of the building to where it's a safer environment for our kids to get away from the traffic and more parking for our parents. Gaston finally has parking, which, by the way, is the first time ever, so, and it also has green space, which our kids will be able to play in outside and run like they have been able to at other schools, so we're very proud of this project. Cunningham is the biggest project thus to date that we've taken and now bringing to completion. Kamozy Construction Company out of Kenosha was contracted for this. They've just exceeded expectations. It's a beautiful, beautiful, historic building in our community, and if you look at the old architecture and how it blends with the new, it really is, I love it. I tell you what, and if you go in and the groundbreaking for that or the ribbon cutting is towards the end of the month of September, I just really encourage anybody and everybody to come to that. It's spectacular inside, and when you walk from the old or the new part into the old part, or vice versa, you see the transitions, and it just is, it makes you really proud. Beautiful new gym, beautiful new opening off the town line there, a lot of parking, parking in the back, they're getting a lot of trees put in. Unfortunately, I had some calls today about some trees that had to come down there, it had nothing. It had nothing to do with the construction project, it had to do with actually disease in the trees. So, sometimes life has its own toll, but I'm, we really look forward to everybody coming and seeing this, and this is, along with McNeil, our first two intermediate schools that are open now to really engage in that new learning environment for our students, which are grades four through eight, and then there'll only be one transition between there, which is the grades three to four, and then one after that, which will be the one that takes them to high school. Need to say Frozen Intermediate Schools received a lot of publicity. I have to tell you, that is, it's going to be a shining star for Beloit. You come through it, and already you can start to see it take form. The footings are all poured, the walls are going up. Cullen out of Janesville is the contractor in this. They are doing a tremendous job. We have, at this point, about 30 mason that are coming in to start to lay block on this, and so they will, their hopes are to have it all under roof by the end of the school year, or by the end of the fall, so that they can continue in the inside construction in the summertime. Again, a lot of local contractors were involved in this, so all of the pre-cast panels was done by Midstate, a lot of electrician, a lot of other work is done by local contractors. Proud to say the board voted tonight that we were able to, after a couple of hiccups, if you would, to make sure that we could afford it budget-wise, a couple of hiccups because Beloit Health had to make sure they were taking care of their long-term needs as a, as an organization, and tonight, the board voted to go back into partnership to put a track and field there, which is great for the taxpayers of Beloit because to do that later would cost you about $200,000 more than it does now. It affords us the opportunity to have a great facility coming right off of the I-90 corridor so that it's easy for schools trying to access us, so that will give our kids an opportunity to have two different tracks in town and one more venue to host events. So, we're very proud of that, and we're glad that that could come back to fruition again. McNeil Middle School went through its transformation to an intermediate school, and now that key word in the middle, which is middle, will be gone and out of our minds for a long time, and we're glad to have this as an educational, again, opportunity for our kids. The transformation here was to change over some rooms that it would be more able to afford the educational opportunities, academic programming in the area of science, in the area of art, in the area of mathematics, so some of those buildings had, or some of the building infrastructure had to change, add some classrooms, make them more adaptable to intermediate school. So, it has the four, five, and six winged downstairs away from seven and eight, just as we promised in the referendum. You'll see that also within the Frozen School. They are definitely separated, they'll have separate schedules, kids will have separate entrances, and so Mr. Bosco and Mr. Rydok are working very hard to get school ready to go for next week. There's a new entrance that's going to be a secure vestibule for people to enter through, to go into McNeil, so that, once again, with school safety in mind, I think one of the things you'll find with every one of our remodels, we did a good job of making sure that we have put safety first for our kids, not only in the traffic patterning of our schools, but also in that secure vestibule and making sure that all other doors are locked so that when people come in, they have to be buzzed into our schools for the safety of our kids. So, thanks to everybody involved in that, and to the city as a partnership there. So, we've been making the moves, and we talk a lot about this because making the moves means a lot of work. So, a few years ago, we went from a transition from 12 elementaries down to 10, and now we again, continue to close buildings. I have to remind everybody again, as we do this, it is all about the fiscal well-being of our school district and the programming of our kids. We feel that we have the unique combination of being able to close down buildings, offer better services for our kids, more equitable services, because with fewer schools, we're able to do more for all kids, no matter what part of town they're from. And every one of our buildings now have been restored into a way, a place where we have the most modern facilities for all of our kids. The moves were a lot of work, and I want to thank our employees from ABM that work for us, the, the number of people that come to work for us for the summertime, Kristofferson, moving in a contract with them, it just takes a lot of work to move a school building. So, our employees, our teachers, and our custodians, and our paraprofessionals, and all of those administrators that help orchestrate, it's a lot of work to get settled into a new building, and I just, as a school superintendent, I know the Board of Education would echo that, and as a public, I hope you do, thank our educators for the amount of work they put in to re-adapt their life to a new classroom, a new building, sometimes a whole new location for them, so, or a grade level. So, we moved from Burge to McNeil, seventh, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, or fourth, fifth, and sixth grade moved from Burge to McNeil. McNeil's sixth through eighth grade, half of them that were in the Cunningham neighborhood, now moved over to Cunningham, and then RCA to Wright so that we could close down Burge School completely, going, or the Eclipse Center completely in the future for us. I'm also proud to tell you that the Board of Education acted tonight on one of our retired buildings, which is Burge Elementary, pending a final contract, which I'll be sending to the board for final approval to look at. The agreement has come through with Richardson School to purchase Burge School for next, for this year, so Mr. Kabelka and myself will be working on the final details to get to the board for final approval. We've also, the Board of Education has instructed me to contract a commercial broker to continue to work with the rest of our retired buildings so that we can do with due diligence what's best for the public, and quite honestly, retired school buildings aren't the most sought-after venue for a lot of other organizations, so we're proud that we have one gone, and we're going to continue to work to do that with the rest of our buildings. With that, thank you so much for this, for your time in this, and I hope this is informative. If you ever have time as a public, please shoot me an email, call the office, I always return those calls, so thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Awesome job, everybody, because it does take the entire village to make all that happen, right? So, we look forward to some ribbon cuttings, and we look forward to the changes that are moving forward, and, and I think we'll be in great shape as we start the school year. So, with that, let's move forward to reports to the board. So, first, our finance and transportation, Michael, please.
Well, we spent some time, just give you some highlights, if you weren't in attendance at the meeting. We approved some fourth and fifth grade independent reading libraries that'll be coming forward to the board this evening, as well as sixth to eighth grade literacy intervention materials that will be coming forward. So, you know, as we're changing things and staying on course, it requires sometimes that we get other materials for, for students in different buildings as we're moving things around, so you'll be seeing that coming forward. We also reviewed our budget adjustments, and then received a pretty comprehensive budget update from Janelle, our business manager, and spent some time kind of going over where we've been, where we're at, and where we think we're going. Just a reminder to everyone, you know, we, we start our fiscal year July 1st, but we don't know what our funding is till October, so that leaves us with...
Even Michael's drinking that poo.
Yeah, that's right. Yes, sir. So, that, that leaves us with a lot of guesswork in between those months, so there'll be more coming to all of you as time goes on, but if you have a moment to, to check out the presentation that was in the purple packet for August 8th, it's very informative, a lot of information in there, kind of give you a picture of all the things that we've been doing as we've been doing all of our building projects and renovations and other things going on. And not only just looking at, we hear a lot of times about the money we've taken out of our budget, but we're also, at the same time, doing quite a bit to enhance the offerings we have for our students in this district. So, I encourage you to take a look at that, and there will be more coming in the future. That was our meeting.
Thanks to Michael. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to curriculum and instruction. Mr. Aikum is taking a well-deserved vacation tonight, and you know, kudos, we should, we should mention really carefully, while Steve talked about scoreboards, right, we should really, let's be transparent, John has taken the lead on this and done just a, just a yeoman's job of making this happen. I'm sure there's some businesses that don't want to see him walk in the door because he's been out after them to get them to put their, their wonderful names on some wonderful signs for some dollars, and, and has done a great job. So, I think, congratulations to John, we will say that again when he's back with us again, but wherever you are on the road or on vacation, John, please hear us, but, and the public, please hear us as well. I mean, it's just been awesome, so.
Hear, hear.
Let's go to curriculum and instruction. Missy, can you lead us with that, or do you want?
Sure, I can try.
Walk your way through, it'll be good.
Yeah. We met on Tuesday, August 12th, and we went over the monthly fund development report, which continues to be very exciting, bringing money into the district and having Janelle and others work very diligently to apply for the grants. We also looked at grades six through eight literary, literacy intervention supplemental materials, we looked at grades four and five independent reading libraries, which consisted of lots and lots of different books that would be leveled for children to have at their own reading level, and we looked at an online learning program update. Future agenda items included the online learning program updates, spring board, gifted and talented, monthly fund development as usual, and more reports on the data, and we adjourned at 4:43.
Thank you, Missy. Any questions? Awesome job, you can do that again.
Okay.
Nora, we're gonna, can you lead us through policy and personnel, please?
The policy and personnel committee meets twice a month, and we go over personnel recommendations. This last month, actually all summer, there's been a lot of hires, resignations, a lot of movement, so we, we really thank the district for going through all those changes prior to the start of school. But we met on July 22nd, and in that meeting, in addition to approving personnel recommendations, we also moved forward a policy 112 on non-discrimination and policy 411.3 on student harassment. Then, we met again on August 12th, and on August 12th, we approved a core six through eight teacher for Cunningham Intermediate School, and this is going to be paid through Title I funds. This educator will be assisting with, excuse me, I have this on another page here, but anyway, we are hiring a core six through eight professional educator at Cunningham Intermediate School. We are also hiring two behavioral specialists to help in our wellness clinic, and these two specialists are being paid through two different grant projects. We also spoke, or discussed our school athletic and activities code, just some minor revisions there, dealing with consequences of students violating the school, the school code of conduct. They were, as I said, minor changes, and the board waived a second reading so that we could get those, that wording in our, our athletic book before the start of school. We also discussed policy 656, which was the revenue from, from public and private grants, and again, we were just streamlining practices that we already do. As you know, we've been going through a lot of policies, just tweaking as they need it and bringing them through the committee to the board if it's something more major than that. We also had a legislative update. Missy brought some information on equity and funding, and we hope to have more information from our legislators, maybe a meeting after the elections. Our future discussions will include employee code of conduct and gathering some information on our exit interviews, as well as updating policies in our 300 and 400 series. Tonight, before us, with all of the information I've shared, the board will be considering hiring the core six through eight grade teacher at the Cunningham Intermediate School, as well as the behavioral specialist positions, and policy 656 for the grants, as well as updated personnel recommendations. And that's all I have to report.
Any questions or comments for Nora? Hearing none. We are at the consent list. All items marked with an asterisk will be enacted in one motion unless someone wishes to pull one out. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is budget adjustments. These are the items that come to us occasionally as we start to wrap up the budget, be ready for the auditors. These are the last set of adjustments that come through. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Michelle, you got that? Okay. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hiring a six to eight, six to eight core teacher, right?
Move approval.
Second.
Heard move approval, heard a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Behavioral specialist positions to support the SS and HS grant.
Move approval.
Second.
Shannon, please.
I'd like to request the maker of the motion and the second or two friendly amendment under qualifications, point one. If you look at point two, it says minimum qualifications, I would request that we ask on point one for it to read desired qualifications. Without desired, it implicates that there are requirements, whereas the minimum then could be a point of contention. Also, with number four, the ability to lift or move 50 pounds were applicable. If we could move that under number eight to the physical fitness, I think it would read better, and it would make more sense with the overall reading of the qualifications. And I can go over those again for the maker or the second or if need be. It's just to be ease, for ease of reading and for hiring purposes.
Good?
Good.
Okay.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Policy 656, revenue from public and private grants.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Personnel recommendations, this would be the exhibit that is in front of us, some of it we saw in the, in the previous meeting.
Move approval of revised exhibit A.
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments? I will add one, thank you very much to the personnel office and to, and to, it's beyond the personnel office, it's also to the hiring committees, principals, all the folks that are in the middle of bringing us up to speed. We have, it's a new world, and we talked about that a little bit earlier tonight, it's a new world in education where people, Steve calls it free agency, and it is very similar to that, it really looks that way. So, we have 15 people that have left us in the last, in August, right, and we open in just a few days. So, so we've been able to hire people and bring them in, but we also have people that are moving around, and it's a new, usually you didn't have a ton of people move in August, and this is an unusual piece, and we're going to study that. We are not alone, from what we hear, it's not just Beloit, it's all over the place, but it's kind of the, maybe it's the, one of the unintended consequences of Act 10 and some of the changes that are out there right now that, that we're seeing, and so we need to figure out how to best respond to that. We are doing a good job, but I think we're going to need to figure out some new strategies and, and see where we go. Shannon?
Kind of as an adjunct to that, John, I just want to say thank you to all of our current staff that are staying with us.
Absolutely.
There's a tremendous amount that are core in our, in the positive movement of, of who we are as a district, and that understand that a lot of the changes and the trials and tribulations that we're going through are not, not those that are board-related, they're not district-related, but they're more the state of the state, of, of the state. And we understand as a board, and I don't want to speak for all my board members, but I think that I've heard everybody echo that, we understand that it is a hard time in education, and we're trying to do all that we can to listen and, and hear what you have to say. So, thank you to everybody out there, and I want to say we're off to a great year, and I can't wait to see what, what this year brings to us, so thank you for your understanding.
Okay, so with that, we have a move, a motion and a second. All in favor of personnel recommendations?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those pass. Items of interest for consideration in future meetings. We have a number of items on our plate, we will continue to work on those. Next meeting, committee meetings will meet on September 9th, business meeting is September 23rd, and, okay, so I don't know what the world's record is, but we're at quarter to eight, so we're gonna adjourn at quarter to eight. Please make special note that, so, so the public knows, poor John's not here, and he Please make special note that, so, so the public knows, poor John's not here, and he'd be, yes. A week ago, we had a board workshop that went way longer, before that, we had, I own it, it went way too long, so I'm gonna play this because tonight, we're at quarter to eight, and we all get out early tonight, so thank you and happy August.
Thank you.
Thank you.